May 12, 2014, Planning Commission meeting. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, staff. Welcome, welcome to everybody in our viewing audience and listening audience. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from commissioners?
None for me.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Garrow, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes 5-0. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from an April 28, 2014 meeting. Any changes, commissioners? Staff? I would entertain a motion on that.
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is a public application for Buell Consulting for a conditional use permit amendment for additional ground equipment at the existing cellular tower located at the water treatment plant at 50 River Ridge Court. Mr. Garros.
Thank you, members of the commission. The first application we have is a public hearing. This is very similar to the application that Planning Commission reviewed at your last meeting. It is for the same applicant, actually Verizon Wireless. And what they are requesting is an amendment to the existing conditional use permit at the site to add an additional ground equipment building for additional equipment that's needed for Verizon Wireless. The project is located at 50 River Ridge Court, and that is the site of the city's water treatment plant. If you have not had the opportunity to be there, it is very well screened from existing trees all around the site, and it also is on a hillside. All the adjacent properties are commercial or industrial, so we do not have any residential uses adjacent. And on this screen, this just gives a general overview of the, you can see the water treatment plant with the large white roof. Then the green roof is actually kind of green, it's kind of fun, it's attached there a little bit to the northeast. And then northeast truly of that is the existing monopole, which is, I believe, 145-foot monopole. And there is one equipment building that is there now. The monopole is on city property, so there will need to be a separate lease agreement. I didn't do it. Apparently, that's a new way of, you know, making sure everyone's awake at the planning commission meetings. No, but anyway, the tower itself is not owned by the city, it's owned by AT&amp;T, and they've got a current building and lease on the property. What the proposal is, is for Verizon Wireless, they want to add a prefab equipment building, almost identical to what AT&amp;T has there now. They are looking to expand the lease area by 500 square feet. Currently, I believe AT&amp;T has got 1,600 square feet. So what Verizon is proposing to do is to expand to the northeast, another 500 square feet, put another building up that's a little bit smaller than the existing AT&amp;T building. That building is proposed at nine feet tall, and it basically looks identical to this, except a little bit different, different size. At the water treatment plant, there are no adjacent neighbors, single family or others, that really see this site. I believe that I worked on the tower when that was initially approved back in 2005, and really didn't have any, haven't had any issues with the site. The city does like to lease its facilities if possible because in those leases, the city then recoups money for when these private cellular companies locate on our property. The equipment will be, will not be screened other than the existing property where it's screened around the periphery. There will be an additional fence, such as is shown, just a standard chain link fence that will be installed. And the building itself is just an exposed aggregate prefab-type building, will have tan trim, and this shows approximately what that building will look like. As far as the site itself, they had initially proposed a generator. However, this area is in what's known as a wellhead protection area. And for those of you who are not familiar with that, woo-hoo, we'll be bringing that to you later this year. So something to look forward to. Basically, what that is, is it's an area around the city's wells where certain types of uses are restricted or limited so that they don't end up having a pollution event associated with the wells. So we will be dealing with that later this year. But the applicant has removed the generator, so there will not be a generator at all in this facility. With that, the recommendation from staff is to consider approval of the conditional use permit amendment, subject to two conditions, and these conditions I've placed on the screen. In reviewing the application, our engineering consultant found that the legal description that was prepared for the first lease area, that 1,600 square feet, is off a little bit on the north side. So what the recommendation is, is that the leases, the legal descriptions for both lease areas, the existing and the proposed, need to be revised in order to include all of the equipment that is at site and that will be proposed. And those are the two conditions that are added. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Any questions from this panel?
Just a couple. Deb, the generator piece, there is a generator on site today, and that obviously belongs to AT&amp;T.
Yes.
And so that's something that'll be dealt with at a different time. I understand the wellhead piece, and you've gotten some information on that.
Yes, for those, they will be, this and the proposed facility are both on hard surface, which is a good thing because that would help to stop any leaks and those types of things. We would not, most likely, when we deal with this wellhead protection area, we most likely will not be going and having existing uses retrofit their uses. But when they come in or have to do some work, there may be some additional conditions that they need to comply with. And that's kind of what we're looking at right now. We do have a consultant that's drafting those zoning amendments and that district information. But for this site, they are not concerned. And since the applicant was able to basically just remove that, they didn't really need the generator at this particular facility, that just makes it better in all ways.
Okay, so there, then I would be able to have an understanding that there's not a, then a place to plug in an emergency generator that may have diesel fuel on or something, since there's not one. The one that's there now is temporarily on a trailer.
Yes, and that's, that's an AT&amp;T, and this would be a Verizon site.
And so then Verizon, in a sense, would, if the power went down, lose their service? Or is there an understanding that if there is a power outage, that they would bring in a temporary generator?
I don't think that they would need to bring that in. The generator is AT&amp;T's, but I believe it does apply to the entire, you know, to the entire site. So I believe that that will take care of anything because this is, it's kind of a, kind of a mix. Because you've got a couple of different companies leasing basically the same area, using the same pole. So I think that they're able to utilize what's there and are satisfied that they don't need their own generator.
Okay. And then, holding Verizon accountable for AT&amp;T's lease changes, that's the best way for doing it? Or can you explain why that we went down that path?
Yeah, there's actually two things because the pole is already owned by AT&amp;T, and they have the first ground lease. And because that initial ground lease does not cover all of AT&amp;T's equipment, it affects this site where Verizon wants to locate. So really, what they're looking for, for any application, they should be providing the legal description of their site that they're going to be leasing. And they actually have to wait for AT&amp;T to revise their description and then come in with a description for their 500 square feet that rests on the AT&amp;T legal description, so.
So Verizon's just waiting for AT&amp;T to revise theirs.
Exactly.
We're not, we're not really kind of holding them captive, but they can't do anything until AT&amp;T fixes their lease.
Exactly, yep.
No more questions, Chair. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Garros, let's go back, if you don't mind, a moment to the generator issue. I am a bit concerned about the current generator that is there. If AT, if Verizon, are we sure Verizon can use the AT&amp;T generator if, in the case of a blackout?
They, I am not positive of that, but they don't believe that they need another generator. And I do know that that generator for AT&amp;T does service the tower and the existing equipment.
Assuming that Verizon will be able to use the AT&amp;T generator?
Or an alternate source.
Or should that be in the agreement between the city and Verizon?
That could be something, and probably would be something, that's more of a lease matter than the land use clearance itself. The land use clearance is the building itself, so that's what we're looking at tonight. It gets a little bit complicated because of the lease, but that definitely is something that could be addressed in the lease.
There are issues with the lease because we need to correct some of these things that were outstanding as far as AT&amp;T are concerned. And I'm not quite happy with the way this is going ahead. Because we are saying that there has to be an agreement before any permits will be given. And this permit has to be between Verizon and AT&amp;T. You know, I'm wondering if at the same time, it could not be stipulated clearly that if there is a blackout in the area, that service to Verizon will be lost? Or that if the agreement is with AT&amp;T to use their generator, then it's clearly stated?
And I think that's something that is more appropriate for the lease than the land use clearance. Again, the CUP is for the building only. But that is something that we can, can include, you know, as far as the lease negotiations. What's happening is that AT&amp;T has got a large lease area, and they've got the tower that they own, they've got their own building. Now you have another carrier who wants to come in and co-locate, and they want to have their own lease space, but yet they're co-locating on AT&amp;T's tower. So there is a relationship that's already there, and that's, that's where the lease comes into play with these types of things as far as, as opposed to the land use clearance, which is just for the building itself.
I mean, I hope that Verizon.
You certainly can recommend that to us, yeah.
I mean, in the discussions that would follow, that if that can be brought up. It would be much easier for everyone if it's written, the agreement in the agreement, that they can share the same generator, you know, or that Verizon will lose service if there's a blackout. That's all, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Thierry?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Could you clarify, I'm looking at the site plan or land study plan, there's an existing building also in the site. Does this site belong to city or anybody or as far, I'm talking about the entire site?
The entire site is owned by the city of Burnsville. And then AT&amp;T has got a lease agreement for, to be able to have the tower there, which they own, and their existing building. And then this application is for a different carrier who also wants to lease additional square footage and co-locate on that tower.
So the portion of the site that is leased by AT&amp;T remains as it is?
Yes, yes. Everything will remain as is for AT&amp;T. The only thing that they need to adjust is the legal description on the northerly side doesn't go quite far enough to cover where their actual equipment pad is. So they need to adjust their legal description. And then, north of that and adjoining that common lease line will be Verizon, and they will have an additional 500 square foot lease area for their building.
Yeah, that's, that's part of my confusion, if you will. I'm not sure exactly where we draw a line, or property line, what, what area is a cutoff line with, as to AT&amp;T?
On the site plan, it's a little, it's a little difficult to see. But basically, there is a square area where the main building is. And then the tower itself is a small circular area here. The line, the lease line, is approximately here. And what Verizon wants to do is they want to extend that for their own lease area for this small 500 square foot area for their building. And what needs to happen first, before the lease with Verizon can go forward, the legal description needs to be corrected, which really should not take that much time. It's just a matter of their survey or expanding it to cover the existing facilities on this northerly side. And then Verizon will be able to use that same lot or lease line, if you will, and create their lease agreement, their legal description from that.
So currently, in order to, in order for Verizon to access the site, they have to go through AT&amp;T?
Yes, there will be a sub-agreement, yeah, there's a, there's another sub-agreement that's totally between the two carriers, yes, for access. And to be able to put their equipment on the tower and, and those types of things.
And that's going to include with the new lease agreement with AT&amp;T? The city involved with this agreement at all?
Yeah, we are to the extent, we have got a person that is responsible for all of the city facilities where these wireless communications equipment goes, all the water towers, the cell towers, those types of things. So what she does, she negotiates the ground lease, if you will, for both of these private carriers to locate here. But they, in addition, have, have another agreement between the two as to how everything works in terms of access to the other lease space and those types of things. But that's a separate, it's a separate agreement.
City doesn't anticipate any issues or conflict with these agreements?
No, we do have a separate attorney also that reviews those lease agreements, and they don't anticipate any issues.
So they're comfortable with the way?
It's very common for carriers, you know, to do this because everybody can't own their own tower. You know, communities don't want towers proliferating all over the place. So it's common for more than one carrier to be on, on a monopole and have different lease space.
Thank you.
Thanks, anybody else, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Garros. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to have any comments or questions at this time is encouraged to step forward and ask them.
Good evening, I'm Rob Viera with Buell Consulting. I can answer questions if you'd like to, I represent Verizon Wireless.
Sure, and what's your business address?
Sorry, 5096 Merrimack Lane, North in Plymouth, Minnesota, 55446.
Commissioners, any questions?
I can raise the same question.
Okay, Commissioner Singh?
Ms. Garros, is there any plans to discuss for Verizon to discuss with AT&amp;T the joint use of that existing generator? In case there's a blackout, I'm just trying to put you guys on the safe side.
Yeah, that'll be in the master group between the two companies, in case that does occur. But there also is a battery backup inside Verizon's equipment shelter. So if it does go off, like I say, the 12 hours, the batteries kick in. But if extended period of time, the agreement takes place between the two companies to utilize it, it's already there.
I think for 12 hours, that would be adequate.
Right.
That's all, Ms. Chair.
All right.
Sir, do you have any concerns over any of the two conditions that have been placed?
No, I think that's fine, these kinds of things happen all the time. We'll send a survey out there to redo the legal descriptions, but it's not a big deal to have that done. So as you said, it can be done like a day or so, probably it's not a big deal to have that done, so.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Come in. Anybody else that wishes to have a question or comment at this time? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Unless there's any comments, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chair, that this is a reasonable request. Staff is recommending approval, or that we recommended the city council approval. I think it's a small area of land that they're asking 500 square feet with the building that hasn't, meets all our requirements, it's only a hundred, less than 195 square feet. I think it deserves our, our recommendations, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Anybody else have any comments or, all right. I'll look for a motion, I guess, at that time, this time then?
Mr. Chair, I beg to move that the Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of the CUP amendment for additional ground equipment at the existing cellular tower located at the water treatment plant at 50 Ridge Court, subject to the following two conditions. One, prior to approval of the lease and release of permit, the proposed easement and lease area need to be revised to include all equipment associated with Verizon. And two, prior to approval of the lease and release of permit, the discrepancies in the easement and lease area with AT&amp;T need to be resolved.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Thierry seconds it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that would pass 5-0, and we go to council on, from tomorrow. So the 20th, I believe, all right.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, an application for Adam Severn, Severn, for a CUP to allow grading in steep slopes and a variance to allow retaining walls to be installed closer to South Twin Lake than the required 150-foot lake shore setback for the property at 160 Carriage Lane. And I believe this came up last time and wasn't addressed, but it was continued, is that correct?
Yes, yes, the hearing was continued to give the applicant a little bit more time to get their survey completed. There's some issues in being able to do that well with ice on.
And are we ready to proceed today, tonight?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we are. The public hearing is for the conditional use permit itself, and that is when you have an application where there is grading in steep slope areas. The ordinance requires a conditional use permit, and that's primarily to take a look at what is being proposed and make sure that there are not any negative impacts associated with the project for the adjacent properties. In addition to that, variance is being requested. In this case, the proposal is for, to install some retaining walls. The tallest part of the retaining wall is about 7.5 feet. And that is a structure, and it's required to meet structure setback requirements. In this case, the setback requirements to the ordinary high watermark are 150 feet, which if you were to apply that in this situation, that setback would occur out in about the center line of Carriage Lane. What we have in this neighborhood is a situation where the entire neighborhood and the majority of the lake shore lots that you see on the screen were platted and developed with single-family homes before the city was required by the state to adopt shoreline management regulations. And the shoreline management regulations do. And the shoreline management regulations do a good job in general on outstate properties or outstate lakes. They're not so good with developed lakes in the metro area. And the way that the DNR likes to deal with these is to require their ordinance to be adopted and then look at these on a case-by-case basis for, with variance applications. So we've got pre-existing conditions and then 10 years after the home was built, the shoreline ordinance came along and this lake was classified the most restrictive public waters classification of natural environment lake. And if we were looking at this site today, none of those lots would be able to be subdivided or developed as they are. It would require a much larger lot area and much larger depth. The subject site, as you can see on the, on the overhead, really the largest part of the retaining wall or the highest part of the retaining wall is toward the lake shore. If you take a look at all of the properties along the lake, you will note that none of them could possibly meet the 150-foot setback. So what we have is a situation where we're looking at this on a site-specific basis. This application was forwarded to DNR and they had no comments or no issues with the application as proposed. Specifically, what we're looking at is we have the existing home and this house is on a severely sloped lot. I believe from approximately Carriage Lane down to the ordinary high watermark, there's a drop of about 30 feet on this lot. So there really is no flat yard area per se on the property. It's, it's all hill. And the area between the ordinary high watermark and where the retaining walls are proposed has a slope that exceeds 40%. So that's why we're looking at the conditional use permit in this case because of that severe slope. The applicant came in and we've been working with his designer and the applicant for a number of months on this particular site. And what they're proposing to do, it's a little hard to see, but on the survey you can see that there are some existing stairs. There's an existing, let me point to it. I don't know if you can, whoops, wrong one. Oh, you can, great. There are some existing stairs, there's an existing like platform, little deck, more stairs, there's a bunch of wooden planters and retaining walls that have been on the property for a long, very long time. What the applicant is proposing to do is to basically take out some existing retaining walls, install new walls along the side lot lines that are shown here and they'll be stepped down. And then the larger retaining wall is in this location. And the setback from the ordinary high watermark is about 42 feet for the retaining wall. And it's at its deepest at approximately this location, about 7.5 feet. And then over on this site, it is, I believe, if I have this right. If I can find it here, excuse me. On that side of the site, it's more like about four and a half feet. And then as you go up on both sides, we're dealing from like one, one to three and a half to four feet for the retaining wall depth in these locations. What they're proposing to do is to remove all of this, install the new retaining walls, and then in addition, there are a number of other things that they are proposing to do to mitigate stormwater issues on the site, drainage, and then also to provide additional native plantings and, and bring this area down by the lake, basically all to native plantings. For the retaining wall itself, as I said, this is where the structure setback is. Everything, the way that the shoreline ordinance defines lake shore properties and various things, there's a shore impact zone, which is that area that is half of the setback. So for the first 75 feet, which is basically most of the lot, the buildable part of the lot, if you will, that is shore impact zone. And what the shoreline ordinance is trying to accomplish is when you're doing something on a lake, especially a natural environment lake, they're looking at a couple of things the state is looking at, trying to minimize the appearance of structures as viewed from the water, trying to keep it more of a natural type of situation. Again, more like you'd find upbranded lakes or something of that area as opposed to a developed, developed lake. And they are also looking to provide for habitat and have a shore area that has native plantings as opposed to being manicured all the way down to the lake shore. Again, to help with drainage, to help with habitat and appearance. What the applicant is proposing to do is basically everything, everything that is northerly of the retaining wall, they will be taking out some non-native species out of that area and they'll be replanting what they can back in this part of the site or they'll be just removing, removing some of the material. There are two small trees that are located in this area and that's where the main filling will occur for the project. So those two trees will be lost. They're both like crab apple, smaller ornamental type trees. And then there are additional trees that are proposed to be located on the property and they're also moving some shrub material, lilacs that are non-native down here to other parts of the site. The applicant is also worked very closely with our natural resources department and the types of plant materials that are proposed and we went through those in the report. They're all acceptable to the natural resources department and basically everything in this area will be shoreline buffer, if you will, materials. The minimum requirement is that you have 20 feet back from the ordinary high watermark that's shoreline buffer. This will be much, much deeper than that. We've got, like I say, approximately 40, 42 feet of shore impact area. With that, one of the conditions that staff is recommending is that as a condition of the variance approval, that this area remain in its native, with the native plantings and that that is a condition of the variance so that at some point in time in the future, if somebody comes in and wants to create a large beach area or something of that sort, this is tied to, again, the, the planting area and trying to get at some of those criteria that the shoreline ordinance is designed to accomplish. With the addition of the retaining walls, they are going to need to bring in, I believe, a little bit over 110 cubic yards of material to do filling in this area and then also backfill. And that does require a grading permit in order to do that. The grading permit comes into play for shoreline lots anytime you have 10 cubic yards or more material. Standard grading permit is 90 cubic yards or more. So we definitely have that situation. So they will need to do a grading permit. That is a separate review that's done at the staff level and we do take into account all of the MPCA requirements they'll have to provide through construction, erosion control and those types of things. A second condition that, that staff is recommending is that as part of the permit, that they provide some additional information on drainage, just to make sure that as these retaining walls are going in, that they're not causing additional increase in stormwater runoff to the adjacent properties to the east and west or increasing the rate. And at this point, our city engineer is fairly comfortable that there will not be any issues. And that is because as part of the project, they are proposing to install infiltration, infiltration tanks in this area of the site. They're also proposing to install some pervious pavers within the, the project site itself here on the, on the Carriage Lane side of the project. When we review variances, the city council has a policy, a variance guideline policy, and it doesn't necessarily mean that whatever the criteria are, plus, minus, et cetera, that that is, you know, an exact reason to, yes, we should deny this or we should approve it, et cetera. But it's kind of a, it's a guideline that staff uses per the city council to, I guess, provide some consistency in variance applications. And for this particular application, we did attach the variance guideline policy and in those, they did have, if I can find it here, 13 positives, five negatives, one item that was not applicable to this particular site. And this is very consistent with other similar variance applications in this particular As far as the site impervious surface goes, there's really not much of a change that's occurring. They're at 36%. They are actually reducing the impervious surface by about four square feet. The coverage remains the same, it's 36%. And, but they are making improvements, as I said, by installing the pervious pavers and some of these facilities to take in some stormwater runoff for the, for the property. The applicant proposes a small, kind of a deck or platform area that's just north of the proposed retaining wall and then a series of stairs that will access the lake shore. The only issue there and a condition that we've added is that in the shore impact zone, which everything on the lake shore side of the home is located in, there is a maximum landing size of 32 square feet. So we're recommending a condition that, that that landing be reduced to meet the In terms of, we talked a little bit about screening, that the shoreline regs are trying to, you know, take a look. And because we've got kind of a large retaining wall there, that was something that we asked of the applicant. And actually, they're proposing to do exactly what DNR recommends since they will be putting in, it'll be a stone, or not stone, but architectural, architectural retaining wall. And through here, they're actually proposing to install some binding plants. So basically that will cover the front of the wall against when you're looking at it from the lake, from adjacent properties, it's not just going to look like a big wall there. It will have plantings and things and it will help to integrate that into the project. With that, we believe from a staff perspective that the intent of both the shoreline district and the slope areas, that those ordinances, the intent has been met. The application usually for the sloped, excuse me, steep and severe slope areas, usually when we look at that application, it's at the time of subdivision and make sure that we're not creating any steep slopes or if it's a major natural feature that we're not, not destroying that natural feature. In this case, this area along this entire lake has been developed, probably from a staff standpoint, instead of having that steep hill that's there, putting in the retaining wall will probably actually stabilize those slopes a little bit better. The improvements will be in the fact that they are doing the native plantings for such a large area, much beyond the 20-foot shoreline buffer. There was a variance application that was approved a few years ago for the property to the, to the south or the west. And that did include a 37-foot setback for the home. But if you look at the aerial photos, you'll see all along here, there are retaining walls that are proposed. And in terms of natural features from a shoreline perspective, we really don't think that there are issues with the proposed grading. Those will be handled at the time of the grading permit and they're really not disturbing anything in the shore area with the exception of where they need to do work to install the retaining walls themselves. With that, the recommendation from staff is to consider approval of both the conditional use permit and the variance applications, subject to the five conditions. And I believe that I have addressed all of those. Is that the one, number five? Because the retaining wall is over 4 feet, it does need to be engineered and there will be a separate building permit also that's required for that. So we did just note that as condition five. With that, can stand for questions?
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Garros this time?
Mr. Severn, the property owner is, is here to, tonight.
Great. Commissioner Julie? So for the erosion control permit, I, I don't, I think you said it was over 100 cubic yards or something like that?
About 110 cubic yards.
Is it an NPDS permit or is it, is it, I mean, is it, is it going to be regulated by the MPCA and monitored?
Yes, the same, the MPCA standards will apply, yes. And they do need a grading permit and there is an entire section of the zoning ordinance that relates to all the stormwater prevention requirements. And that relates to not only the grading, but the erosion control, keeping that stuff maintained throughout the entire construction part of the project. And yes, that will be handled through the grading permit itself.
It looks, from the plan, it looks that the, you've got retaining walls on either side with respect to the neighbors, the adjacent lots. Have the neighbors been notified of this activity?
Yes, because of the CUP application, property owners within 350 feet of the exterior boundaries of the property have all been notified.
Okay.
If it were just a variance, then we would just deal with the, both adjacent lots.
All right. And then has there been consideration given as to how the 100 cubic yards of soil is going to get back there?
That's something that they will have to show as part of the, the grading permit. They have to show how, how that's going to be brought in. It deals with all sorts of things from not being able to track dirt onto the roadway, needing to stay on the, on their own property to do the grading, et cetera, that it'll all be part of the grading permit.
So that'll be all handled administratively?
Yes, yes.
And then what kind of, I'm guessing that as part of that permitting process, there'll be escrows?
Yes.
To prevent bad things happening in case the erosion control doesn't work out so well?
Yes, there is a, a standard fee that's part of the city's fee schedule and it's based on the number of cubic yards that are involved in the project. So there will definitely be escrows for the grading and to make sure that turf is established, et cetera.
Okay, but I think even like on the, I think on the NPDS permit, that there's some escrows regarding maintenance of the erosion control measures, et cetera?
Yes.
And some leverage to assure maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that'll all be administrative?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradrick?
Deb, on condition number three, the, since it's a, I just want to make sure, it's on the, since it's a CUP, the buffer strip adjacent to shoreline shall be permanently maintained. So it's a CUP, so it rides with the land, correct?
Yes.
So as the home is sold, hopefully the next homeowner would, how does, I'm always a little fuzzy about when they, if they do their title work, where does that CUP show up with the land if they purchase the property?
Sure. Both the CUP and the variance will be, there are legal documents with these conditions that will be filed at Dakota County so that anybody doing any type of research on the sites, this would come up. And yes, then it would, it would run with the land in both cases.
Okay.
That was the only question I had, Chair.
Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, can you review for me, please, the measures that are being taken, undertaken to mitigate storm and rainwater runoff?
Sure.
I know you touched on it, but I wasn't quite clear.
They are installing infiltration tanks, which actually are to store water in this area of the site. And that will help to, instead of everything, you know, just flowing the way that it currently does, it will be slowed somewhat, especially in that area with those retention facilities. And then in addition, they have got some pervious pavers that are proposed on this part of the site. And that again, also will help to take some of that existing stormwater and slow it down in terms of where those activities are located. and slow it down in terms of where those activities are located. And what will happen with this, and something that the, the city engineer wants to see a little bit more detail on, is just how the water, the rates, and where the drainage patterns will be for this with the retaining walls, and if there will be any change in that. We don't anticipate that there will, because they're not really adding any more impervious surface to the property. You know, the site is a hill. It all drains right now, the way that it does.
That's why I'm a little concerned, because of how steep
Yes.
the property is.
And what they will be doing actually in backfilling behind these retaining walls is providing a flat surface out here that's about 23 or so feet deep, as opposed to, it's about nine feet right now. So there will be some of this area too, that will allow for water to infiltrate, as opposed to directly flow into the lake. What they need to do in terms of stormwater requirements is they cannot, as a result of construction activity, increase either the rate of runoff or the amount. So that, those are standard things, and that would come out in the grading plan.
I was very impressed with the buffer here and the native plants, the variety
Yeah.
of the plants.
They really did a very nice job.
Yeah, I was very impressed with that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Commissioner Julik?
Thank you, Chair. Just to be clear on regarding the, the recording of the CUP, et cetera. So it actually gets recorded, and it's more or less kind of an encumbrance on the property? So any purchaser
Exactly.
will know, and they can, and they'll know.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Has any, has there been any thought given to like a conservation easement along the shoreline there, or does the city feel that the CUP suffices?
I think we feel from a staff standpoint that the CUP and variance suffice. There's already, it's hard to see on here, but there's already a very large drainage and utility easement. I don't even know if I can, yeah, I can't really show you. But basically, all of these are encumbered by a large easement that covers the lake area down, I believe, to, I'm not sure what the elevation is. I believe it's almost to the ordinary high watermark. So, and the reason for that is because this, these lakes, North and South Twin Lakes, have some bounce in terms of flood elevations and whatnot. So the city did take those easements, actually, I believe before, or right at the time that the property was platted. So I think with, you know, considering that almost two-thirds of their property is already encumbered by easement, we don't see a need to take additional area. If we did as a conservation easement, it would really be the same, same type of thing. The conservation easement itself would be recorded on the properties along with the CUP and variance.
Same, no.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from, Commissioner Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a large amount of retaining walls here. Are they any, any restriction on city ordinance based on the ratio of the site to these kind of improvements, as far as the amount of retaining wall, linear foot or square footage? And my second question is that I hope the applicant will also provide additional construction documents and drawings of the retaining wall, showing the construction of the retaining wall, backfilling
Yes.
drainage issues and so forth for
Yes.
city calculations.
In terms of, we really don't have any particular standards other than the impervious surface, and they're not increasing the total site impervious surface. It's pretty much staying the same. We do have just the provision, because this is a lake shore lot, where we can deal with, you know, the screening part of it, as viewed from the lake, and they've addressed that through their plantings and, and vines, et cetera. As far as the backfill, how that will be done, the type of block proposed, yes, all of that, all of those details will be required as part of the grading and the building permit, because anything retaining wall four feet or over needs to be engineered, and there's specific criteria in the building code that goes along with that. So yes, that will definitely be provided. They had initially provided a type of stone that they thought they were going to use, and for, I don't recall the, the specific reason, but they're not able to get that. So they're looking at alternatives, but it will be some type of a, a regular, like decorative block type of retaining wall, and it has to be almost, you know, just for the strength of that, because it is holding back quite a bit of dirt.
Actually, the amount of retaining wall that I see here has to be structurally engineered, stones of retaining walls to
Yes.
to bear the load.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you. Any commissioners, any questions for Mr. Severn? Want to come up and talk, or?
Yeah.
All right. Step up to the mic if you would, Mr. Severn.
Hello, my name is Adam Severn. I'm the homeowner at 160 Carriage Lane. A couple of comments that I had, one about the, the retaining wall. So that block is no longer available that we had originally proposed. It's manufactured in Canada, and for whatever reason, it's, it's not going to be available for us to use. We're going to use a similar engineered block, and it is an interlocking block, so as it stacks, it, it maintains that structure, and there will also be tiebacks that go into the, the fill area to, to keep that wall strong. And that's a part of the, the retaining wall permit that the city requires. One other comment that I wanted to make was on the, the first condition that goes with the lot. So it says the landing that connects the lake shore stairs shall be reduced to 32 square feet. That, I think there was a little misunderstanding on that. That, that piece that goes, it, it kind of runs east to west before the stairs are just adjacent to the retaining wall. Those are actually stairs. It's not another landing. The, the slope is steep enough that just going straight up from the shoreline was going to make the stairs too steep. So this, this section right here?
Those are steps.
Yeah, so the, in, in the plan, it wasn't clear enough, I guess, that the city thought that was going to be a, a deck. Those are in fact going to be steps that are going to run, you know, vertically to kind of help with the vertical circulation of the lot. The stairs, if we were to go straight up from the shoreline all the way to the retaining wall, there would have been too much rise, and the stairs would have been too steep. So those are actually going as stairs, not as a landing. So hopefully that, I guess, that requirement can be removed. And the only other comment I wanted to make was, you know, the, the main purpose of this site is to really just get some usable flat yard in our backyard. As Deb has kind of mentioned, the, the lot is extremely steep. We have a, and some usable space in the front yard, but the backyard is a very steep drop from the house. And my wife and I, we have a young son, and we have another one on the way, so we'd like some yard to be able to use. But it's, it's in accordance with really a lot of the other lots on the lake. A lot of other lots have retaining walls that are currently in. Several of them are larger than what we're asking for, and a lot of them encroach more on the lake than what we're asking for as well. So hopefully you guys will take it under consideration and give us approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming here, explaining the project. I, you mentioned about young son and another child coming, so I, I would unofficially would suggest, because of the child involved, maybe you're thinking of protection guarding railing for safety issue. I, I think the city has some ordinance that over 24 inches drop, there, there needs to be protection railing as well, too, so.
Yeah, it's, it's shown on the plan, and I think, I don't, it must not have been in the comments, but yeah, we're proposing a fence along the entire retaining wall. We have a dog as well, so we want to use that. So there will be a, either a chain link or like a wood pillar with steel rail or steel cable type fence along the entire retaining wall.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sir, any of the other conditions, everything you're, you're fine with?
Yeah, no, everything else I'm, was within kind of the plans that we were already working on anyways. This isn't outside of anything other than what we were planning on doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so I understand, is there any landing of any kind, then?
Below the retaining wall? No, there will not be. Other than, I, there's a few breaks, I guess, in the stairs, so instead of it being straight stairs the entire way, there'll be, you know, maybe a, a four-foot kind of small landing as, as it kind of progresses, but no, there will not be any other.
No deck type?
Mm-mm, nope.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing at this time. For anybody who has any questions or comments, wishes to speak to this issue at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Entertaining comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd just, I would like to know, are we removing condition one?
I think we, maybe, Ms. Garros, how, what's your thought on that?
I think that we will, yes, we can remove the condition one. It just wasn't clear from the plan that those were stairs, but they're the same width and everything. So what we'll do is just indicate, you know, as part of the testimony, that those are stairs, and it is not a landing, and therefore, that's why condition one is.
Can we just re, renumber?
Yes.
Okay, so one through?
We have four.
Four of them?
Four, yes.
Starting with number two, basically?
Correct.
Fair enough.
Chair, I could be in support of this. I think the applicant's done a great job working with the city, definitely adding to the, to the property, giving them some backyard. And as I drove around the neighborhood, everybody on both sides has, and what the applicant is doing is actually much nicer than what's, in some cases, already there with some railroad ties and some other stuff. So I definitely can be in support of this CUP.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else have any comments?
Just, just to say that, you know, there, I think during my time here, we have had other applicants from that area, from that lake area, that have come before us, and this one really stands out because of the planning and the, the depth of work that is being done to help us make a decision, a very informed decision here. So I would be supporting, supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would also say that I, I'm impressed. I think it's a great upgrade. It certainly helps the Severn family, and it seems to be even helping the overall purpose of the lake shore rules and regulations, and so I think this would be an excellent addition and upgrade from what they have. I'd look for a motion at this time.
Chair, I, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the city council's approval of the CUP and lake shore setback variance, subject to the following four conditions. And I guess instead of going through those, Deb, it would just be conditions two, three, four, and five?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, as identified in the staff report.
Motion by Commissioner Bradrick, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Julik, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, pass five zero.
Great.
Thank you, and this will go to the council also on the 20th, then?
Yes, next Tuesday night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Good luck to you. All right. Next item on the agenda is any updates, commissioners, any updates at this time?
None from me, Chair.
Commissioner Singh?
I hope it's appropriate, Mr. Chair. Our vice chair has, I think, made it known to us that he will not be returning after his term has expired. I mean, that, to me, is that okay? Can I talk about it?
Sure, sure.
That, to me, is a severe loss that the, this planning commission is suffering. I know that the city council will be getting applicants, or they've already have a list of applicants, to succeed him, but he has been a very, very articulate and good person to work with. I enjoy serving with him, and I, I personally would like to say thanks to him for his contribution to the commission and to the city, and to wish Mr. Pat Julik, to say thanks to him again, and to wish him all the best after your term expires. Please keep in touch.
Thank you for the kind words. I don't know how much of a loss it'll be, you guys, we've got, I think, two, is, just one alternate now?
One.
And I think we have, and I think the planning commission has really strengthened recently with the addition of some of the new members, and so I think you guys are going to be in great shape. And my understanding is that with the shutting down of, of the HOC committee, there might be, there'd be more interested applicants. So I think it's a, a good opportunity for me to step down and other people to step in, and, and I wish you all the best, and I think it's been an honor for me to work with you guys, and an honor to work with Deb and Chris and the rest of the city staff. It was, it was a very good experience for me, and I would encourage other members of the community, if they're interested in, in serving on a commission or a committee in the city, that it's a good experience, that you should, can do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Julik. We will miss you. I will miss you. I've learned a lot from you my time here, so. Any updates from staff?
No. I don't think we can.
All right. And I think the next, the next meeting would be Tuesday, the 27th, I believe?
Yes.
Monday.
Tuesday because of Memorial Day.
Oh, this says Monday.
So it'd be, that's why I was announcing, because it'll be Tuesday, the 27th, instead of Monday, because then Memorial Day, I believe. That'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Bradrick, second, by Commissioner Singh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.